Call the school committee meeting to order. Ms. Reynolds, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Resource committee, short report. We met on October 3rd. We basically just went over the grants and donations that are on tonight's agenda, which Mr. Roach will go over later. We also approved funds for the Crocker Field Choice Fund for Crocker Field.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, moving on, school building needs, Mr. Stevens.
We met at Long Joe School, and we were given an update by Mark Kasperian and Mr. Roach on what was going on in the school system. And we introduced Daniel Osterston, the director of school building maintenance, who has just started on the job, and it was great to get to meet him. Mark went over an update on the architects and engineer selection for our Capitol projects, and went over the HVAC at Memorial and Reinhold South Street. And we also then took a tour of the Long Joe auditorium, and they gave us an update, what was taking place at the auditorium, and what is going to be done to make it so nice so we can use it again. Looking forward to seeing that. That's it, thank you.
Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Policy committee, Mr. Bogan is not with us this evening. Moving to student support committee, Dr. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was not present at the last meeting. Mr. Thompson would, did Rosemary or Mr. Hughes have a report for tonight, or we are all set?
The last time Mr. Hughes gave the report on both policy and student support.
Thank you. No, Mr. Mayor, nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, school personnel committee. I have nothing to report at this time. Executive committee as well. Student representatives, or representatives.
Good evening, fellow school committee members. It is so great to be with you all again today. Firstly, Pittsburgh High is undergoing one of the busiest, yet funnest times of the year. The fifth annual Hispanic Heritage Month celebration took place this past Thursday, October 12th. The multicultural club showcased clothing from different cultures, different dances from Venezuela, Peru, DR, and more. Along with this, they also had poetry and live singing performances. Shout out to Ms. Rivera for always putting together an amazing show for the school. Best Buddies hosted their first ever homecoming dance on this day also. They had a great turnout and had so much fun dancing, listening to music, and eating good food, and are hoping this can become an annual event. Now, the high school is undergoing our first spirit week of the year, in which we will have our pep rally Friday and the homecoming dance on Saturday, the 24th. Secondly, Goodrich Academy is having an excellent start to this year. They now have a breakfast club Monday through Fridays from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m., where they help kids build friendships, eat good food, and participate in fun activities. Goodrich students are also back participating in ROTC and the Project Europe programs. Goodrich has van pickup as well, so students can get picked up for school. Long Joe is on to big things on top of that, and have many clubs being formed, allowing students to get more involved. They have student government that started October 4th, and will be meeting every Wednesday, along with art club and card and game club as well. Fourth graders at Long Joe Elementary are now participating in such an amazing opportunity. They were awarded the Fresh Grant last spring, in which they'll be able to plant outdoor gardens and towers throughout the school. They also got a new playground setup, and students were finally able to utilize it at recess this past week, and the following weeks now as well. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I'd just say, I thank you for including other schools other than just the high school in your report, I appreciate that.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, approval of minutes of the previous school committee meeting of October 2nd, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous, thank you. Communications. Alternative delegate for the 2023 MasAC Mass Joint Conference, November 8th through the 11th, 2023.
Make a motion that we appoint Dr. Maritz and Knight as the alternate for the mass conference.
Second.
Motion to nominate Dr. Knight, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous, thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Knight.
Congratulations.
She knows she's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome, okay. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Please go to the center podium, cite your name and address, now seeing none. Now going into superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have a few items on the agenda. The first item is regarding the Fenway Thanksgiving Game Update. Earlier today, the Pittsburgh team had a meeting to finalize the plans, and tonight we'll be sharing the community, the plans for the Thanksgiving game, and then we'll be pushing this information out tomorrow morning to the wider Pittsburgh community. Here tonight, we have Todd Robbins to share our plans. Todd, let me just pull up the sheet that you'll be going over. In front of you is the one pager that we will be sharing out, and we try to summarize all the information for you on one page. Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, so appreciate it. Good evening, school committee members. So we are a go for the 143rd meeting of Pittsburgh and Leominster, the 117th Thanksgiving Classic will be Wednesday, November 22nd, 2023, with a 6:30 kickoff at Fenway Park. We can now say that definitively. The following offers and information that you're going to see, these will be communicated to all of our stakeholders tomorrow, both via email to our district email addresses that we have on file, as well as to all of our social media platforms. So hopefully, we're able to answer some of the questions that people have been starting to sort of relay in, and some of the concerns as well, that they have had. Important to note, the offers and the packages that you are going to hear about tonight are consistent with our counterparts over in Leominster Public Schools. There was a meeting between Superintendent Thompson, myself, and our opposite numbers, Superintendent Deacon and Athletic Director Dave Pelosi over in Leominster, to make sure that we were consistently offering the same things across our platforms. And so I think we've arrived at what I believe is a really great opportunity, and again, it's through the generosity of the taxpayers of the city of Pittsburgh, as well as obviously the generosity of our administration in finding a way for our communities to participate in this great event. So tickets for all Pittsburgh Public School students will be free. There will be a Google form that will require your submission of your information by November 3rd. There'll be one form for high school students, so that's Pittsburgh High School and Goodrich Academy. There will be a separate form for our pre-K through 8th grade students. Our pre-K through 8th grade students will be required to attend with a paying chaperone. So there will be two different forms that will be available for that. All Pittsburgh Public School staff will attend this game free, as long as they sign up via our Google form on November 3rd. Families of all 50 football players will be allotted four free tickets from the district. Those signups will be collected directly through our football program. The families of all band and cheer participants will receive two free tickets, and those signups will be collected through their respective programs as well. And then for those that have not seen to this point, the general public, general admission tickets are $20 per ticket. They are available now at redsocks.com/highschoolfootball. Be sure to click Pittsburgh before purchasing your ticket. It does help to designate your particular fandom, and those monies, as noted previously, would be directed toward Pittsburgh High School. All of the tickets, and this is sort of the important piece here, they're all electronic. They are good for both games on that day. So the game that will play in front of us, if you were to arrive early, you can go directly through the turnstiles and see the game in front of the Pittsburgh-Leominster game before, obviously, that game starts. So no worries if you want to get there early, you're worried about beating the traffic, that opportunity will exist for you to enter right away upon arrival. All ticket holders need to download and use the MLB Ballpark app, that is what Fenway Park is using for its electronic tickets. The key to this is, is that the email address that is supplied on the form has to be the same email address you create your MLB Ballpark app account with. Basically, Fenway Park will push the tickets out once we give them the list, and it connects to the email address. So it helps the community, as well as obviously all of our stakeholders here, make sure that they are using the same email on the signup form that they are going to use with the MLB Ballpark app. Mr. Stevens.
Todd, is there going to be any help for, not everybody is going to be able to do that. Will there be help for some, you know, our older folks who might need some help?
Yeah, absolutely. And there are certain people who are volunteering right now to get help. Yes, we will find a way to communicate, whether it's through my office, through the central office. We'll have some online information, we'll kind of walk people through that step by step.
We will help.
If you need help.
No, you're not going to help, you're going to do it. Hey, I don't know about anybody else, but I mean.
I was going to say, come on down to the athletic office, happy to, happy to help in any way we can, for sure. No, no doubt about that.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Reynolds.
Does everything that you have just said also apply to Leominster?
Yes.
Yes.
All information that we're presenting tonight is the same as Leominster. The only difference is, Leominster is not providing community transportation to the event, Pittsburgh is.
Can Leominster go with?
Really? Really? I like it, yeah. Yeah.
How about that?
We're taking care of our people.
That's a perfect segue to transportation. So all high school students will travel free. That signup is on the exact same form you're going to sign up for a ticket with, just designate you'd like to ride on the bus, and we've got your contact information for that. For our pre-K through 8th grade with their chaperone, again, same form, just designate, obviously, I'm coming with so-and-so, those seats would be saved on our district bus free of charge. Pittsburgh Public School staff, free as well. Again, same signup on the exact same form, and the key is all by November 3rd, so we can get that information to the appropriate locations, whether it's Fenway's ticket office, First Student, or our other suppliers of our transportation on that. And then community members, again, free of charge for transportation, unique here in the city of Pittsburgh. The key is, you've got to buy a ticket via redsocks.com/highschoolfootball, and then sign up for your seat via the community bus form, that will also be released and shared tomorrow publicly as well, and I'm sure the mayor will help us reach a broader constituency than we have access to in our database of email addresses. So we've got to, I've got to reach everybody that we possibly can. If they have questions, obviously, the mayor's office, central office, and my office, happy to answer any questions as we go through the process.
Just, I would ask that you also share out this information on your, your social media page.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What, how do we contact your office specifically?
Certainly, it's 978-345-3245.
Say again.
Yep, certainly, 978-345-3245.
Thank you.
It's the first time I've gotten it right without looking it up.
I know. Been here for a little bit now.
So the email that goes out tomorrow will have the link to the Google form to fill out.
Yep, and they'll be broken up by the various stakeholders.
I have a question?
Sure.
If you sign up, like, to say that you want a ride, like, transportation, would it be mandatory, like, if I signed up and then I end up finding a ride from someone else?
That's an excellent question. I don't know, we looked at that some.
No, I think if you, if you're in high school, you, we are not requiring you to have a chaperone, so if your transportation plans change, just, we would like, you know, for you to let us know that you will not be riding the bus.
Okay, thank you.
We just need an accurate count for the buses. So if you let Dr. Bragg or Mr. Robbins know, you know, when you find out, that's fine.
Okay, thank you so much.
No problem at all.
One other question, this may be a dumb question, but Pittsburgh Public School staff, does that include the school committee, or not?
Yes, you are free.
Okay, I just didn't know if you should buy a ticket or not, that's all, I'm just saying.
You are, you are free.
No? Just asking.
But you'll be required to spend.
You should spend. Yeah, you have to chaperone a bus, Mr. Walsh.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
By any chance, do you, I think you indicated there's a game that precedes our game?
There is.
And what is, do you know the two participants?
I don't off the top of my head, I believe it's the Chelmsford game, and I'm not 100% certain.
Chelmsford versus, we don't know.
Whoever their rival is.
Bill Ricker.
Bill Ricker, okay.
Chelmsford versus Bill Ricker, thank you.
And also, in the email tomorrow, at that point, will people know what time and where the buses are?
So as we indicated here, the rally points are still sort of in question. We are talking about a 3 o'clock departure to make sure that we avoid all traffic. It's just a question of, we're still working on what the precise best rally points will be, to have the buses pick up the various groups and take them out, as well as have places that are large enough to accommodate parking and those sorts of things.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
This is great. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
Thank you.
All right, so this evening, we have the first half of our MCAS and school improvement plan presentations. We have the middle schools and high schools tonight, that will be sharing their MCAS results from last spring, and sharing their school improvement goals for this school year. So the first team I'd like to call up is the Long Joe Middle School team. Principal Mark Pierce with his admin team, who is here to join them.
You guys can stand.
Looks great, the picture.
Do you want to quickly introduce him by name, Mr. Pierce? Thank you.
All right, so first, we have Paul Agnesi as assistant principal, and next to him is Melody Sockell of SBSA, and next to her is Tracy Pathless.
And then watch out for us, an acronym of the, principal. What is she?
Student Program Support Administrator.
That's why I call it SBSA.
That's so much better.
So it's like an assistant principal, but focused on supporting the special education students.
Thank you.
So first off, one of my favorite pictures is right up there, the Long Joe Middle School all lit up.
There you go.
Beautiful, beautiful.
So that's what I figured, we start with that picture. Last year, when I spoke, this was in draft form, but this is our instructional focus and values that we worked on for the year. It was worked on by the IL team, instructional leadership team, staff, and students. And what it says is, all Long Joe Middle School students, staff, and community members will invest in the Pittsburgh Public School core values, so that every student will grow into a problem solver, into a problem solver who thinks critically and communicates effectively. So everything we do at Long Joe, all the decisions we make at Long Joe, always fall back to this. You can see some pictures around, there's a structural focus, we have our STEM library. Again, all students have access to that to focus on critical thinking. We have WPI field trip with 7th graders focused on STEM for critical thinking. We had our book fair, we have iReady prizes, again, to encourage students to read as we try to build a community of readers. And lastly, we had, we promote academic excellence, we got our National Junior Honor Society back up and going last year. It was four years, I think four to five years since we've done that, so we were able to get that up and going. Also, this was in draft form last year, so we came up with a student-friendly instructional focus, We Rise Up, which stands for Respect, Integrity, Safety, Engagement, Unity, and Perseverance. We introduced this to students this year with daily lessons and advisory. We promoted it at the beginning of the year with T-shirts for staff members. It is up in every classroom on posters, where teachers can visit it every day. It's now the Long Joe Way. So this is, again, what we refer to when we rise up. Some highlights and initiatives, we're trying to increase attendance, which we'll get into in a few more minutes. Like I said, we're doing community outreach and engagement. We are focusing on critical thinking, professional development, what teachers have gone through. We're trying to build a community of readers, we're trying to do student-to-student discourse in every classroom, we're increasing STEM college and career opportunities, and we're trying to build our Long Joe community. Some other highlights and initiatives, more about the building, our new windows and blind project is almost complete, and as a student asked me when this project was going on, "Mr. Pierce, are we getting the see-through windows this time?" So which I thought was, but what a difference it makes. So I, I thank the committee here for getting behind that, it was really needed, and teachers and staff and students really appreciate it, so thank you. We got our new phone system up and going last week, so the phones now ring. That was a problem in the summertime, but the new phone system is finally up and going. We're about to get new locks installed, so I know Pittsburgh High Memorial has had locks for a couple of years now, and now at Long Joe, we're finally going to get those. That is going to start in the next week or two, where they'll start putting safety locks on all the, on the, all the classrooms. We have an electric sign that's going to be outside the building, so that is coming. It's in the process, I think the bid just got finalized, but now it's in the process of being finalized. And if you've been around the upper parking lot at Long Joe, that has been cleaned up last week, and what a difference that makes too. And again, so just some pictures showing student, student discourse, some STEM activities, and against, and then again, to build community, I had to take a pie in the face at the last, at the end of last year, so anything to build community. So those are some of the highlights and initiatives that have been going on. So next up, we get into the accountability status. So this year, we were, our accountability percentile is in the 6%, and a little bit of history, so before COVID, Long Joe was at 7%. We had two years of COVID, so there was no accountability status. My first year last year, it came out to 4%, and this past year now, we've increased it two more percent, so we're at 6%. So what that means is, that we are requiring assistance or intervention, because we fall in the bottom 10%. So that means the targeted support would be, focus schools have worked with us the last couple of years, and the SSOS team, which is the state support team, we'll also be working closely with them. So again, the reasons why we fall in that category, because we're under the 10% mark, and also one of our low student group performances, which is our Asian subgroup. And you'll see that they performed very well at Long Joe, but when you compare that subgroup to the rest of the state, they fall in the bottom 5%, so that's why they're identified. Also, for as far as progress toward improving targets, that's 50%, and that's really, they set targets for us, and so we meet them about 50% of the time, we want that to be up like 75%. So again, you'll see that we've had a lot of improvements in attendance and some of our growth scores, where we need some, some work is trying to get our achievement up, which you'll see in a few minutes here. This is, if you want to think of it as a report card, this is how they come up with some of the, the scores, and you can see that each category, you can get up to four points. So if you look across for achievement, you can see in our English Language Arts, we got zero out of four points, and what that means is that our target, we actually went below, we decreased in our score. If you continue to go across, you'll see that the other category is our lowest performing students. So they base us on all students, and then they look at the bottom 25%, and they do the same rating. So you can see in ELA, we have zero out of four points there. In math achievement, we had some success, so we did make some gains towards our goals, so we got two out of four points. If you continue to look across, you can see at our bottom 25%, we got all the points. So what that means is, if you get all four points, that means you went above your target. So that is one of the real positive things for our math scores. And again, science, you're going to see achievement for all students, that we also exceeded our target for science. The next group is our growth, and again, lots of positives for our growth, our ELA, we got two out of four points, so that means we, we improved towards our target. In math, we got three out of four points, that means we hit our target. And again, going across, you see the lowest performing students, two out of four points, two out of four points. So again, our achievement is a little bit lower, and that, those are the things that we have opportunities, we can grow, and our growth scores, again, came back pretty well. The next one is high school completion, we do not fall into that category. What we do fall under is, the next one is progress towards attaining English language proficiency. So that's how well our students are performing and gaining proficiency. So again, we struggled with that a little bit, we got zero out of four points, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. The next, or the last category is chronic absenteeism, so that means students who are absent 18 or more times in a, in a year. So you can see we received all four points, that means we exceeded our target, and again, I'll get into more details about that. So the next slide is really, just breaks it down even more, so this is the achievement for ELA. So again, you can see that we declined in a lot of areas by 1.4 to 2.5 points. So again, we have, we have some work we have to do with this category. Our Ls and former Ls, minus 4.5, our Hispanic with minus 3, so again, some of the categories, subcategories that we have to work on. Some positives, our Asian subgroup had 6.6, student disabilities pretty much remained even, and white and African also had some improvements. So really, some opportunities of growth, some things that we've changed this year, or starting earlier, we have our MCAS slash access tutoring starting in October. Last year, we started that, I think it was late December, if not January, so we're starting that this month. We have writing in the new curriculum, there's more writing for our students, and they're also going to be exposed to more types of text, informational, nonfiction, and fiction. In our lesson planning this year, we're making sure there's critical thinking in every lesson, so every student, every day, in every class should be getting critical thinking. We're making sure there's opportunities for student discourse. We realize that by having students talk to one another and sharing out, that's a good way to improve our critical thinking. We're making sure that learning target assessment criteria posted in every classroom, this provides clarity on what we are learning for the day. And then the last thing is, we're providing co-planning opportunity for our teachers. One of the, a lot of feedback that I got last year is, teachers were not feeling that they had a chance to co-plan with their special education teacher or their ESL teacher, so now we carve that time in once a week, where they spend up to 50 minutes, 55 minutes together, working with the specialists. And now, if you look at ELA growth, like I said, lots of success here. You can see, as far as growth, we want to be between 40 and 60, and so we fall in the, in the 40s. So again, we got a lot of our points, so we, we had typical growth, which is low, but that means we moved towards our target, our target. And again, so lots of twos and a couple of threes with our Asian subgroup, and our multi-race subgroup, and our white subgroup, so they actually hit their targets. So that's why it says typical growth high for some of those subcategories. Now turning to math, again, math, there was lots of success, we've gotten most, we got a lot of our points, two to four points, as you can see up there. So again, we improved, if you got two points, again, we improved, but we were below our target, and anything three or four means we either met it or we exceeded. And again, some positives here, you know, all students, again, we, we had a plus one, got two points. Our lowest performing students, like I talked about earlier, got all four of their points. Our Asian subgroup, which was our biggest improvement, got all four points, and our multi-race also got four points. So again, some opportunities for growth for this category. MCAS tutoring, again, for, for math, making sure critical thinking in every lesson, making sure there's opportunities for students to discourse. Again, learning target assessment criteria posted every day, and we're making sure we're writing in math classrooms, and again, co-planning, so making sure that teachers are not planning alone, they're planning with their, their ESL and special education teachers. And math growth scores, again, all twos and threes, one category, you know, just students with disability, again, we didn't hit the 40 mark. One category, you know, students with disability, again, we didn't hit the 40 mark, so we know we have some work to do with that. But everything else is heading in the right direction. And again, some of the positives, all students, 50.9, so that means we hit our target. Our Asians, 61%, again, four points for that. Our multi-race, 59.8. So those are really good scores for those subgroups. And science achievement, again, falls the same way, and you can see we exceeded our target in a lot of the categories. All students, again, four points, and some of these other subcategories, four points. So again, a lot of positive things there. Students with disabilities, one of the highest scores, and our white subgroup, again, one of our highest scores. And again, science also has an opportunity to co-plan, so getting teachers, again, with other teachers. So access, like I said before, so we dropped in this category. So again, we know we have some things we have to do. We've tried to get them more direct instruction with the ESL teachers, again, increasing the time that they spend with them. We've incorporated co-planning with the ESL teacher and the content teachers. Again, that was a struggle last year, so we tried to improve that. We've created access tutoring, which again, is going to begin this October, and we also add, we're able to add another ESL teacher, giving a total of six ESL teachers, which Long Joe has never had before. Chronic absenteeism, so like I said, that's students who are absent 18 or more times. And so if you look at the 2022, 51% of our students two years ago were absent 18 or more times. That's 300 students at Long Joe. So we were able to get that down 41%. So again, we blew out our target, we got all four points, but we have to understand that 41% is still too high. That number has to get down to under 20% because research shows if kids come to school, they will do better. So we know that is probably our biggest challenge, is getting kids to school, and that's what I need the community and parents and families to help with that. We're going to continue to focus on that. We have tennis meetings with families who are struggling to find out what's the obstacle for getting kids to school. So that's our number one priority now, and that's been our focus. And here's just a little bit of history. I went back to 2014, so the top row, or the top column of the date, so obviously, the second row is the chronic absenteeism. So you can see in 2014, 22.3%. And if you go across, you can see it got up to 28%. And then you can see, once we get to the COVID years, we got the 46% and 51%. And now we can see this year, this past year, coming down. So we need to continue that trend. And the bottom row is just our percentage of attendance percentage rate. So again, you can see that's 93.7% in 2014, and you can see in the COVID years, it started getting to 86, 87%. And again, we got to 89.5%, but again, we need to increase that into the 90s. And then, this is, these are the same improvement goals from last year. So again, I introduced these last year, and I'm not going to read them to you, have them in front of you, but it's really some of the topics that, under those goals, is, again, we incorporated co-planning this year. We've incorporated learning target success criteria. Again, that's a priority not only for Long Joe, but the district. And we've been increasing our learning walks throughout the year. So again, this year, I think we've gotten up to like 85 learning walks, giving feedback to teachers, which is way ahead of where we were last year. The second goal, again, we talked about rise up. We have, we have an SEL in one of our specials this year, that's new. We continued our Bright program for students who struggle with mental health and coming out of the hospitals. And we have a rise up program with students who are struggling to stay in class and just need extra support. And again, we're monitoring attendance, trying to find out the obstacles, why students aren't coming to school. Goal three talks about PD for staff. So again, we've offered PD in critical thinking, we've offered student discourse PD, we've offered learning target and success criteria PD. So we, again, we always come back to our instructional focus when we're making decisions about PD. Goal four, again, talks about resources, you know, time, people, materials, things like that. So again, we've increased co-planning time during the grade level meetings. Principal and ILT members are leading the ILT work during PLC time. We've increased our class periods from 49 minutes to 60 minutes, which was huge this year. We've added an ESL teacher, we've added a system principal, we've added a security monitor, and we've added a clinical interventionist, all to help our students with anything, any things that they struggle with. Goal five, again, trying to build a system of engaged students and families. Again, we're always trying to do that, so we're starting a multicultural club. We have an active PTO slash school council. We have attendance nights, so last year, and we would continue to do that every trimester, we had attendance nights where we have, as much as we struggle with attendance for half our students, we have quite a few students that have perfect attendance. So we represent, we give them perfect attendance certificates, prizes. We have a little pizza at night, we invite the families in, things like that. We have the National Junior Honor Society, we started last year, we'll continue to do that. Dances have been a success, they haven't had dances in years. In the last few years, we've been able to have dances, and so we have 250-plus students show up for those. We've had a very successful open house, and we will have a parent conference coming up in December. And last but not least, our last goal, again, trying to increase engagements with the school community and stakeholders. Again, how do we do that? Through Facebook, again, Facebook is one of the ways we communicate, connect ed, emails of important events, and always trying to create that two-way communication so schools, so school, families, and community feel welcome at Long Joe. So a lot of positive things happening, and we know we have some places we have to improve on, and I think we've put some things in place to make sure we continue to improve in those areas.
Mr. Pierce, you mentioned locking devices for classrooms, the outer doors, the access doors from outside.
So those have been getting replaced, and I probably have to refer back to Mr. Roach for seven of them.
I was going to ask Jeremy, too. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I can answer that. There are seven doors in this window door project through the Mass School Building Authority that are being replaced. It's not all of the exterior doors. Long Joe actually has some of the fewest exterior doors, despite its large size as a 200,000-square-foot building. A number of the main entrance doors were replaced within the last five years. Those are in great working condition. So these tend to be doors in the back access areas that they're replacing in this project. What will be done in the interior doors will be a mortise lock, deadbolt lock on all of the interior classroom doors, so 100 of those doors will be updated. And at Goodrich as well, starting in about a week. In fact, I was in touch with the vendor today. So that'll really make that facility super secure.
So my concern, obviously, is people from the outside getting in. We still don't have, I don't think we have in any of our schools, something that indicates a door is ajar.
No, but in the surveillance, yeah, you're right about that. In the surveillance system upgrade that we're looking to do district-wide, all our buildings, that is an absolute requirement.
Right.
So that's been out to bid. We're interviewing designers. They know that's a must-have in our, in our school buildings that we operate. The one that we don't is McKay, obviously, but the other ones that we do. So that will be part of the new system, and that'll also be FOB entry system for staff as well.
And incorporated in that has to be training, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Know the doors are ajar, someone's got to go.
It's, there's components to that that really will tighten our ability to communicate instantaneously about some of those breaches to the facilities, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes?
Rosemary, yeah.
I didn't want to interrupt you, and I had questions as you went along.
Sure, I'm sure, there's a lot of information.
Trying to recall it. By the way, I am struck with how beautiful all of your presentations are visually to read. It's a pleasure. That is a fabulous photo.
Thank you.
Fabulous. When you mentioned that the state SOS team is coming in, what is the SOS again, something of support?
So there are student supports for...
Student, I know student support, what is the...
It's called the statewide system of support.
Statewide system of support, I wanted to think of that. Is there any time limit to their support, or is it based totally on how well you do, and then they peel off when we're at the...
So I believe, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, they're with you, and when you get out of the bottom 10%, I believe they still kind of put you under watch. And so it's like a two-year process, but...
Yeah. So at a school that's in the bottom 10%, you are assigned to work with the statewide system of support. So if you get above the 10% tile, they give you kind of like a one year of kind of a grace period where they continue to support you, but after that, they no longer support you. So if we, we have two schools that are currently in the bottom 10%. So as soon as those two schools are above the 10% tile, we will no longer have to work with the statewide system of support.
In the past, have we had necessity of their support, and then we recovered? I think maybe Memorial?
Memorial was the school, the most recent school. When I was principal at South Street Elementary School, our school was in the bottom 7%, and we were able to get out of the bottom 10%.
They're out of that, yeah.
So we do, we have, over the last, at least in my experience being in central office, we had four schools when I started in central office in the bottom 10%, and now we only have two left. So we're moving in the right direction.
I look forward to that day.
Yep. It will be next year.
Right. And then, when you were discussing, had we met the goals, you know, year by year? And we had the COVID years. Is there some hidden facts in there that perhaps our standards have been lowered due to COVID in various areas of education that's not represented here? So if the standards were lowered, and we seem to do better, it looks like we're...
Well, I...
You understand what I'm saying?
I think so, but they haven't lowered any standards. In fact, they are holding us to them. And so, yeah, there was a drop in learning, I think, not just in Pittsburgh, but throughout the state. And so I think we're expected to meet those same targets.
But I mean, now the target's the same as, I had heard that in language, that it had been dropped quite a bit for young people, how many words they should be able to say at age 18 months, and et cetera, that that had been lowered.
Rosemary, I can certainly add to that if you would like. So there are two pathways, and actually, you'll notice them in the SIP document. So there is a recovery path, and then there's also a path forward, okay? So those are the two paths. If you are in recovery path, they're still giving you a target that is not at the typical academic rate that, you know, our schools have done pre-COVID. But if you're still in a recovery path, they're still giving you a target that's lower than the typical rate that they would increase the target in response to COVID.
Right.
So you will see that some of our schools have different pathways because their targets are assigned at different rates.
But to the unlearned, like myself, I wouldn't necessarily understand that if I just saw a figure, you know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
But I, okay, so that was accurate. Then I, would you please explain to me, I know it's a simple explanation, this page here where chronic absenteeism data and attendance rate, grades five to eight, grade six to eight, and you have three lines there.
Okay.
I use, does this say, or does this, am I reading the data correctly? Would you just explain those to me? Because there's a wide range between 22% and 93%.
So Long Joe used to be a five to eight, right? So up until only the last couple of years, right? It was a six to eight last year, right? So all that, so I just made that note because it's different data, right? Because you had five, grades five to eight, and now we have six to eight. So the top row, 22%, those represent chronic absenteeism rates.
So during those years?
During those years.
That you said, in the green.
Those are the, yep, below that is the chronic absenteeism rate for each one of those years.
That's pretty high, my goodness.
It is.
Whoa.
So, and you'll find that schools that perform better, they're probably in the 15% tile, 16% tile for chronic absenteeism. So that's what we, that's our goal, is to get to that.
Okay, then the third, the third...
That's our attendance rate. So like, for example, so 89.5% of our kids went to school on average last year.
So it raised that much after COVID?
It went from...
Well, I mean, not just after COVID, year by year here.
Right. So again, you want to see, we want to be in like 93rd percentile for that. So that's where we have to get to.
I can't believe nearly half the kids were out of school, 22, 23. Yeah, wow.
I just mean, half the kids had more than 18 absences?
Yeah. Eighteen or more absences, that's chronic absenteeism. So out of 180 days, 10% is 18 days.
So we've done, we've made, by this, if I'm reading correctly, we've made a lot of progress?
We've made some progress, yes. So we still have more to do. We have still, some work to do.
Thank you. That was it.
Any more questions for Mr. Pierce at Long Joe?
No questions, and not really any notable comments. This is all great news. Small gains are still gains. It's great progress in the right direction. One thing I just wanted to echo was the chronic absenteeism progress that you've made, which is great. And, you know, I remember asking Jeremy Roach what his tactics were in improving the Pittsburgh High School's attendance, and it was a positive incentive program. It was having a board up of the people with the best attendance to celebrate them and their achievement, and that was the whole, it added this culture to the school, that attendance is something to share, something to be proud of, and so on and so forth. And it sounds like you're using the same tactics of a positive incentive.
Yeah, I worked with Mr. Roach for many years, so...
Yes, right. Best practices are being shared, which is great. But it's great news. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to be a little inventive here. But something crossed my mind as we were going along, and I'm in school, in a school, subbing every day, nearly every day, and things can be pretty blah, not really celebrating the person. Now, that's one figure, the daily activity as the school day starts. And then the memorial that we see over here for veterans, when the bell tolls one by one for each fallen soldier or something, it's sacred almost, you know? So I was wondering if there might be some more pleasant sounds celebrating the kids' arrival, or their noting that they came, something that, you know, coming through the sense of sound, we might make a better, more uplifting effort there. That's just a general thought.
Never thought it that way, so I will give it some thought.
You see what I'm saying? The sounds do produce an effect in you. And about the sound now, it's just hurry up, hurry up, you're going to get, go, 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 go. None of it says, it's nice to see you, come in, so that the person feels like, oh, I'm here.
Well, it goes back to welcoming and belonging, right? Welcoming kids into school and...
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you very much.
All right, next this evening, I'd like to invite Dr. Brittany Lavoy and the Memorial Middle School team.
All right, we have a, we have a team. Thank you for having us. I'd like to introduce my administrators. This is Sean Walker, Assistant Principal, and Dee Brito, Assistant Principal of Special Ed. And then along with us are our three administrative interns who are working to earn their administrative license through their work with me this year, and that's Dr. Mary Beth Donlin, Mrs. Carrie Boyd, and Miss Melissa Chason, who have joined us as well. All right, so this is going to be a very brief history, but Memorial's been hard at work since we started in school redesign in 2018, and we have been hard at work trying to establish a culture of achievement. We were in a similar position as Long Joe when we began this work, and we were at the third percentile. So we're here to share lots of good news over our work, but some of these are our favorite highlights from the culture of achievement that we've established at Memorial. And on the top left is our top performers, and they received commendations from the state that included a beautiful letter to themselves, to their families for being meaningful support systems, and they received... received gift cards as well. So they had a little sort of tangible reward for their hard work. And we've raised the percentage of students who are receiving commendation at this point to 12% and growing. On the top right, you see our eighth graders who participated in the Generation Citizen Project, which is a requirement for all eighth graders. But our eighth grade class received rewards at our local Generation Citizen event, which many of you, if not all, were at. And then at the state level, they also received the Taking Action Award for their work on school safety. They're continuing, the students who are in that group are continuing to reach out to their eighth grade civics teacher because their work is still ongoing. And they're making progress at, in legislation, or at least are preparing to with Representative Kishmerik. So our student council, much like Long Joe, is growing. So this is a revival. There are 60 students currently who are engaged in our National Junior Honor Society, and we're looking to expand that to have a National Arts Honor Society to further engage our both performing visual and STEM students as well. Here you'll see the sort of big news is our school accountability raised to the 33rd percentile. We are at 63% progress towards targets, which is considered substantial. We're really trying to exceed the 75th percentile for progress towards targets because we're working towards being a commendation school. And a commendation school is one that has high achievement, high growth, and consistently is meeting their targets. We're not quite there yet, but I'd like to consider us on the road. This is a timeline of our journey from school redesign. So there we are at the third percentile. And before, we actually received our grant to begin school redesign, we were able to tick up a couple. But despite the COVID pandemic, we had significant gains at our next testing cycle once we began. We were challenging ourselves to not be satisfied with that jump, and we were able to grow to the 33rd percentile and are looking forward to see what comes next for 2024. We have big plans. So I will try to keep this brief because I know you went over a lot of this data with Long Joe. I think that there's, much like Assistant Superintendent Cologne was saying, I think that what's key here is to look in the deeper dive in the data in that there are, there's a path forward, and there is a, the word's escaping me, a recovery path. And so the recovery path is a target that was set, like you were saying, Ms. Reynolds, that is trying, it's set for us to recover the learning loss during the pandemic. So you're right, that there is a rigor difference between the recovery path targets and the path forwards. So the, if you don't mind sticking up... Yeah, so what's really sort of, I'd like to find a better word than annoying, but what annoys me about this data is that you'll notice our ELA, our Language Arts Achievement, earned two out of the four possible points. And what's tricky about this is that we are in path forward for English Language Arts. That is actually our top performing subject matter, but receive the lowest amount of points because it has the most rigorous goals. So some of this can be misleading and does require people to, you know, deep dive a little bit. What you'll notice as we continue is that the average Memorial student has a skilled score of 494, which, if you compare that to high school graduation requirements, the average Memorial student is scoring eight points above what they would be required to graduate. So they're in good shape. They are ready, they are prepared for high school. In both math, science, and ELA, students are at least meeting what will be the requirement up until 2030 for graduation. The classes of 2030 and beyond will be required to have an average score of 500 to meet graduation requirements. So as a school, what we're trying to do is make sure that at minimum going forward, our average scale scores are 500 or greater, because that is the only way that we're going to best prepare students for 2030 and beyond. You'll notice that our growth totals are high as well. We're not getting all of our points. We're getting close, but we're still leaving some on the board, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. The biggest challenge that's indicated here is our English Language learners, our multilingual learners, they are not achieving at the rate required by our targets. You will see that their growth is impressive when you dive deeper into our math and ELA data. But in terms of English language proficiency, or the quickness with which students are able to pass the access test is a challenge. So, and last but not least, our chronic absenteeism was a strong suit, continues to be a strong suit. So we were able to achieve all of our points.
Hi, everyone. I don't know if I... Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So as Dr. Lavoy mentioned, I'm Dr. Mary Beth Donlin, and I am the literacy coach at Memorial Middle School. So my job is to really oversee the ELA department and support our ELA teachers to make sure we're moving students forward in the area of English Language Arts. So as has been discussed throughout tonight, what's tricky about being on the path forward is when you set the bar high, the state sets it higher. So you might look at this and say, wow, they're progressing, they're moving forward, but it says they improved below the target. I am the type of person that that bothers me because I want to meet every target because that means we're supporting students the best we can. But I think there's a lot on this slide that doesn't reflect some of the milestones and achievements that our ELA department has met. So for example, we earned a 493.8, rounded up to a 494. That's exactly even with the ELA average scaled score for the state. That's something Memorial has not been able to do in the past. In fact, looking at data, there were years where we used to be 13 points below the state average. Now we're equal with the state average. So the next goal is to then be above the state average. But what this means is that our students in ELA at Memorial are on par with their peers across the Commonwealth, which is important because we want our students to be competitive with their peers across the state in areas of career readiness, college readiness. And so it's important to note also that our average scaled score in ELA was the second highest scaled score in the district, second only to Goodrich Academy. So we've achieved a lot. And so while I'm disappointed in a way we didn't meet the target that Massachusetts set, I'm more excited about the fact that we're a leader in the district in terms of our ELA success. What's also not reflected here are our writing scores. So for the second year in a row, Memorial Middle School had the highest writing achievement on MCAS. We are scoring on average 13% above the state average for writing. There were years in the past we were 20% below the state average for writing. Now, for example, in seventh grade, they're 18% above the state for writing. And so that's a success that really needs to be celebrated because we're preparing our students to go out onto the world and be strong writers in whatever they choose to do. Also, what's not reflected here is I did a little research. Anyone who knows me knows I love digging into data. So I did a little research, and I figured out where Memorial's ELA department fell in comparison to area middle schools. And we do not have time tonight to go into all that, but be expecting an email from me with that data because I think you'd be pleasantly surprised to see that our middle school ELA department is outscoring many of the area middle schools. And I compared it to districts in this area that typically people might consider as more affluent or historically higher performing. And I think when you see where our ELA department falls in comparison to those cities and towns in our area, you will be impressed with what we've been able to accomplish. So this slide speaks to our growth. So if you notice, we had high growth for most of our subcategories. Our English Language learners and former English Language learners actually exceeded typical growth. So they're making a great deal of progress in the area of English Language Arts. Memorial's SGP in ELA was almost 9% higher, so that's our student growth percentile, was almost 9% higher than the state average. In addition, we, the Memorial Middle School ELA department had the highest percentage of proficient students out of all ELA departments in the district. We have made progress, consistent progress in the last five years. Every year, we have increased the amount of proficient students to the point that in our ELA department, we have the most proficient students in the city. So to summarize, while we just missed that target by a couple of points, it's important to note that the Memorial Middle School ELA department is one of the leaders in overall achievement, writing, and the number of proficient students that we have.
Okay, so I have the unenviable job of following Mary Beth. Talking about our math achievement, we are, our math department's a bit behind the ELA department, but as you can see by looking at the slide, in most areas, we're catching up. We're showing some really positive gains in achievement. There's one area that's lagging behind, and I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes after I go through the growth as well. But that is our students with disabilities. We've taken some steps to address that, but I'm going to talk about that when I, when we go to the growth slide, which we're good now. In the growth slide, almost all of our subgroups showed high growth. And again, some of these are towards the recovery path, but almost all of them showed high growth, with the exception of our students with disabilities, still showing growth, but on the lower side of that. So this year, we've done numerous, well, we've done many things to try to address that. But two of the things that we've done is we've restructured the way that our special ed department is servicing students. Previously, we had them working with grade levels and various content areas. And we've asked our special education teachers to start focusing on one content area so that they can really dig in and support in either ELA or in mathematics. The year is only just over a month old, but we're already seeing some promising results from that restructuring. The other, another major move that we made is we added two mathematics interventionists to the school. So previously, we had one, and now we have three mathematics interventionists. And that also goes right along with our three, we added an additional Language Arts interventionist as well this year. So we have three Language Arts and three mathematics interventionists working with students to fill in learning gaps and to help them catch up and be on grade level with their peers. Meanwhile, they're also still getting grade level instruction, so they're not falling any further behind while they're doing that.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Boyden, and I've been at Memorial now for over 20 years. I'm really excited to present the information on science. I've been in the science department since the start back in 2002. So we have a lot to celebrate. When you take a look at this data, you can see on the right-hand side, our path, we have a lot of celebration to consider, so I do want to take time to recognize that. Overall, our MCAS data shows that we met our 2023 state target with that average scale score increasing by five points. The percentage of students scoring proficient increased by 10%. That's 23% proficient in 2022 and 33% in 2023, which also exceeds where we were at pre-pandemic in 2019. All subgroups showed improvement, which keeps us in that path forward category. And one, a couple of our groups that made some really impressive growth is our ESL subgroup increased by 3% in proficiency, and nearly 60% of our student population in the Hispanic and Latino category exceeded their target by four and a half points. So I feel that we are well on our way in the science department. And as you know, while we are making progress, just like Mary Beth had said, we're not satisfied either. So while all subgroups did improve, we are still continuing to find those instructional opportunities to give our students to support their growth as they move forward. We're in the process of doing targeted acceleration time. That's 45 minutes a day. And the MCAS result for science showed that we have good opportunity to improve our analyzing skills using data and graphing. And so we've partnered up with the math department to find opportunities to sort of embed both of those practices. And not only are they getting it in math, but they're also getting it in science as well. And just to note that for the MCAS this past year, they actually took two sessions. So in the first session, it consisted of traditional items and what students were assessed on. The second session, that was a pilot of the Innovative Science Assessment, which is going to be rolled out again this year. And the current plan is to pilot '23 and '24 and conduct a statewide field test in '24 and '25. And then there will be an operational, will be set to go in '25 and '26. So some of the next steps to continue this path forward is to continue with our data cycles. We are in the process of finishing up data cycle one, where we have been focused on the analyzing skills, using graphs, reading data, and really applying sort of those pieces so that they can get better at that, and really using reflective practices to develop the next steps for the next data cycle. So once we make that shift, some students may stay, some students may move on to another content area that they need more academic support in. And one thing is to continue open SIAD curriculum. Right now, we are currently in our third year, and by the end of this year, we will be rolling out all six units. And the curriculum itself really lends to a lot of critical thinking, a lot of practices and routines that lend to discourse, and students collaborating together. So I think that as we move forward, we continue with a program that allows our students to develop their critical thinking mind. We'll continue to be on the path forward and exceed our targets.
All right. Dee Brito, again, I'm the SBSA, our Student Program Support Administrator. I'm here to talk about access tonight. There's already been a lot of references to the EL population and the data points that we had received points for on our last round. And if you look at the numbers here, there's not as much to look at, but you can see that the students let this past year do not perform overall as well as they had in the prior year. However, as both Dr. Lavoy and Mary Beth and Carrie have now just talked about that there are a lot of opportunities, and there's a lot of growth being shown as well when you're looking at the student growth performance. So in terms of growth for our EL students, we made a lot of positive progression in both ELA and math, with the data showing high growth in the math element, with exceeding typical growth in ELA, as Mary Beth had just spoken to. The measures that we're putting in place to try to support this cohort are, again, that targeted instruction, both in our acceleration block. Our EL teachers are also going in even with our Title I and doing a little bit of co-teaching to piggyback, if you will, along those support measures. Another thing that we're doing is that targeted tutoring after school. It's started, and we are also providing bus transportation, trying to remove all the barriers in order to give the students the support that they need in addition to the supports within the school day. We're also working at further aligning the EL classes to mirror the curriculum that the content classes are also delivering so that regardless of what classroom, what teacher, what staff member that these students are involved and engaging with, they're receiving the same pedagogy, the same strategies, and the same high expectations, coupled with the high support. Additionally, we have our two ESL teachers. We still have one open available slot. So we have two EL teachers that are engaged with the coaching, the planning, and they are consistently and regularly planning with the content classes to go in and also are joining in a co-taught model within several of the co-taught classes.
Hi, I'm Melissa Chason, and I am currently the Educational Team Lead at Memorial. And an area for celebration is our chronic absenteeism. So in 2022, we went from 44.6%. In 2023, we brought it down to 36.6%, which is a huge win for us. But like my former colleagues speaking, we're not satisfied. So there are also areas of opportunity, like always. One is our added layer of support in the building through our home liaison, really building relationships with families and tracking attendance. In addition to our student focus meetings, we have implemented bi-weekly attendance meetings to quickly address current meetings to quickly address current attendance issues. And we are also working through the Shannon Grant with guidance and the Pittsburgh Police Department to conduct home visits after school hours, just to increase the time they are out and getting our kids to school.
Can I ask a question? You've got people going into the houses after hours through the Shannon Grant?
We do.
Bravo. When did they start doing that?
This year.
A few years ago.
When?
Yeah, I think this is our third year.
Good for you. Thank you. Okay.
So I will spare you reading these. These are almost identical to Long Joes. And the reason that they are identical is because we have a lot of similar challenges. We have really good PD, and the district is providing us with good structure on how to level up our schools. The, the long and the short of it is our areas of challenge right now are students with disabilities and, and our multi-language learners, and that has been an explicit effort from the district to provide us with targeted professional development and time and the actual faculty to try to make improvements in this area, because it is a sticky point for all of our schools at this point. If you, if you look at our district results in aggregate, it is a challenge, but I can say honestly that I feel like the district's put everything that they can in place for us to, to do this work. It's just, it's going to be a process, and it's going to take some time. And the, this, I promise this is the last thing that I say, is when, we only really come here once a week to, to give you information about our school, and it's really academic in nature. And what I can, what I have to make super, super clear is that the only reason that our school is able to turn around at the rate of success that it has so far is we have incredible teams. I mean, Mr. Walker's going to make sure I don't forget anybody, but, but our, our unified arts department, they are just engaging learners from areas that our math teachers are not. We have award-winning programs. Our cafeteria staff, our bus drivers, they are amazing. And Mr. Walker saved me from myself, so I don't forget anything.
So some of the, you know, we've got a lot of teachers that are working hard daily, but we have a number of people that are supporting them to make sure that they're able to do what our students need, including our clerical staff, making sure that everything's in place for them, our nurses, our custodians, our bus drivers, our clinicians, guidance counselors, our adjustment counselors, our paraprofessionals, our security team, including our school resource officer, who is on vacation this week, and I miss him, and our cafeteria staff, who, you know, all of these people have their own jobs to do, but they all, what, what just kind of oozes out of them every day is how much they actually care about the students in the school and how much pride they take in the school. And we're really fortunate to have that. And, you know, the, the growth that we made the last couple of years is not an accident. It's because there are so many people that are working together, and, you know, we've got more work to do. We're not done, but we have the, the team in place to do that. It's time and effort now.
As I'm sure you know, that the mental health is still a crisis for Pittsburgh children and children across the, the nation post-pandemic. And I'm telling you, our, our student support folks, I mean, and our nurses, they are so integral in protecting the mental health of our faculty sometimes and our kids, and making sure that everybody is available to be their best at school. So we're grateful for our whole team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Lavoy? Before I ask a question, I want to thank Dr. Donlin. I read your Panthophols every week when I get it, and I always remember I should reply to you and thank you, but I'll say it in public. I enjoy it. I love the, and I love the percentages of attendance that I see every week on the days. I think that's a big success, so congratulations to everybody. Just a question, I'm not sure if maybe for all of you, on your, I don't know, about the fourth slide about accountability rating over time, where you went up to the 20th percentile after you came back from COVID. Any idea what attributed that success where a lot of, not just our schools, but a lot of schools didn't make that big jump? And was it teamwork or more student involvement or, I mean, it's a great thing, and I guess I wonder if you have packaged that?
No, I've tried. We wrote a case study for a textbook. It didn't get accepted, but, but it was, I, if I could boil it down to a couple of things, one, I think that we have the strongest team that I could ever ask for in terms of they take care of each other. So people don't want to be absent because they don't want to put strain on, you know, the people on their team because they care about them. People will, there's not a lot of that's not my job, or, you know, we don't have time for that. Like, there's, there's so much just good spirited teamwork that goes on. And then I think that the district provided me with really, really good coaching. I mean, anybody that would coach me, I spend time with, sometimes I maybe had too many, but, and I think that we were able to, like, co-construct a really strong mission, vision, and path. And so it provided direction, protection, and order for students, families, and faculty. They knew what they came to do every day, they knew how to do it, they knew where to ask for help and what supports were available for them, so it was just clean and I think really aligned, on top of having people who want to do the work.
Thank you. That's great. Great news.
Whenever I go to your school, it's always squared away. I applaud you for that. You're too wise a guy.
Thank you, Dr. Lavoy. Thank you, Memorial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Alexis Curry, Principal.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Everyone come back. Everyone come back. I have to take you off. I didn't see you there, Doc, tonight. My apologies. Go right ahead.
Well, I, I wanted to say, and this is also for Mr. Pierce, I'm not sure if he's gone, and Dr. Lavoy, I know how, how hard teachers work, and I know how hard principals and administrators can work. So I'm saying this because I want to encourage you to continue to do everything that you have, that, everything that is possible, to continue to help our students to be able to be successful in their educational career. Be encouraged, continue to do what you're doing, and even take it a step further, because our students deserve the best. I do have a question, but a question is for Superintendent Thompson. And don't take this the wrong way, use it as a way to improve. How many mathematics instructional support members do we have at Long Joe Middle School?
Three.
Three. All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
When Ms. Donlin, Dr. Donlin emails you, I will say you can note that our school may be outperforming the schools in Leominster, I'm just saying.
All right.
Thank you, Doc, tonight. Alexis Curry, Principal of Goodrich Academy.
I'm Alexis Curry. I am the administrative team at Goodrich Academy, and this is Sarah Henry, our academic interventionist, better known as my right hand. We're going to go over a little bit of, we'll make this quick tonight, and your lucky news is, the van leaves at quarter of eight, and I'm the driver. Won't be here long. All right. So some of the things, slides you do not see, I just want people who do not know to know, it means that we do not have the accountability from the state of mass because of the smaller students and subgroups, so there are some slides that you won't see that you did see in the other presentations. So starting off by saying, last year, Goodrich Academy graduated 139 seniors from 20 different cities and towns, had a 95% graduation rate, and 98% earned their high school diploma. Our achievement in ELA, some of these scores, basically, we just give you the real scores because, again, we wouldn't be mapped out in that way from accountability data, but our, our achievement in ELA, we had 19 students take the ELA MCAS last year and 19 passed. 42% met, 57% partially met, and 8 not met.
I'm sorry, was I supposed to go back to ELA? Was I supposed to stay at ELA? I hit it too fast.
I did.
I'm sorry. I hit it too fast, Alexis.
I forgive you. It's okay.
Go ahead.
You won't get in trouble. All right. 19 out of 19 for the ELA, so 42% met, 47% partially met, and 11% not met, but all 19 passed.
Okay, now I'm going to go to math.
You may.
Okay.
Math, we had 21, 23 students take the exam, 21 passed for a 91%, 35 met the criteria, 57% partially met, so you can see we struggle a little more in the mathematics arena than we do in the English, and 8% not met, which is interesting, because although we struggled more in the math, the not met percentage was lower.
And again, this is just 23 students, correct?
Yes, 23 students tested. 21 passed. And out of our science, we had 16 students pass and 12, I mean, take the test, and 12 pass, which was our lowest in quite some time on any of the testing, well, since COVID. And that's a 75% pass rate. So that is kind of the focus of Goodrich right now, the science score, what is going on in science. Some of that, probably not all of it, but some of it may be attributable to the fact that prior to last year, we only had a science teacher in the afternoon that taught MCAS bio. We did not have a night person. We now have a second science teacher brought on board. Formerly, it was a substitute and one teacher. We now have two science teachers. We're hoping that'll make a difference. We still anticipate some struggle in science. Of those students that did not pass, out of the four that did not pass, three of them came to us in the final trimester prior to taking the test. We now have entered in, we have just enrolled for the September enrollment, and 27 students have come through our door without a passing science score. So we clearly need to figure it out pretty fast. So that's what we're doing right now. And at Goodrich, the way we do that is divide out the population, who has to take it, what are their scores going five years back, what are their grades, what have they taken? And then we'll break it into small group tutoring, ELL tutoring, special education tutoring, and after-hours tutorial. So we'll break those up and try to divide and conquer and see what we can do with those 27 students by the test. ELA growth, again, 22, 23. What our main concern here is, and John can tell you previous, I know it sounds crazy, but with only 27 and 20 students taking the test, but getting them all to show up to that test can be a struggle. So what I'm especially proud of here is the growth, but more importantly, 100% on both the attendance rates. And we did see that our partially meeting was higher this time, and our exemplary was also higher now, but our partially meeting was also higher, and not met are higher this year. So that's all interesting. Some of this is a little tricky also, I want to say, because that's why we go with real numbers. We have some numbers in here that are different everywhere because the state does not do our accountability. So like, we're doing it on Open Architect in one place, and we're doing it by other mechanisms, and sometimes those numbers aren't real. What do I mean by that? For example, you have 29, 26 or 29 students that are in the FSU program who are listed under us, but, you know, don't take this test with us. So sometimes our attendance rates and other things in that Open Architect information is not always accurate. And also because we add students three times a year, if you look at one of our charts, it said we had 147 students last year. That's because we're taking in another 80 students long after they are gleaning their information. So what I try to do is stick with the real numbers, which is all of them attended, and that's who passed. Math growth, same, we had 25 out of 26 attendants, so we were one off in the '22 school year and in the '23 school year, 100% attendance. And I did take some notes on that. All right, but I'm not, okay, I'm just going to say that our attendance was 96% in '22. Our exceeds went down by just under 5%. Our partially met went up by just under 3%, and our not meeting went down by 5%. And we have that spelled out over all the slides if anyone's interested in knowing the specifics of exactly what went up and down. All right, this is our access information. In the 2022, '23 school year, Goodrich had 13 L students, 38% met or exceeded expectations. This year, our school has 29 L students. We have an ELL teacher for the first time.
Ever, yeah.
And we're hoping that that will make some gains. We did look back to see what we know. We're hoping that we'll get a lot more relevant information now that we do have someone overseeing that process and monitoring it, making that, you know, their number one mission. But we, we did think that the increase level was higher from the previous years, although some of the decrease level was higher as well. And what we're not pleased with is if you add it up, we have a large number of students, you know, only 42 making adequate increased progress, with your other, the rest of them not making adequate increased progress. So that is something for us to watch as well, and all of this has been shared with the new ELL teacher. All right, chronic absenteeism, what we pay, if I can see, I gotta look this way. Unexcused days, 31. So basically, our attendance rate is 93.6. Our chronic absenteeism, some of that, again, is dependent where it's kept. It's not kept accurately everywhere, and as I said before, we also have a lot of kids that are coming every single day, I'm sorry, that aren't coming every single day, and those kids, the chronically absent, although we're not exactly pleased with 20% or more at 6.7 or 10% or more at 20.4. I will add that even when our students have, those students that we are not yet done chasing down, still have 16 or 18 days. We're looking at students that formerly had 80 to 100 days. So it's not great, but it is improvement. Four-year completion rate, again, this cohort shows us as having 147 total students when we had almost 300. It also shows a graduation percent of 74.8. And again, our students, we showed you the real numbers, we had 139 out of 151 pass. I think this is a reflection of those, some of the students at FSU and other places that are listed under us. Annual dropout rate, again, that's where we show you the real number on the right. We had 139 out of the 146 seniors that walked through the, came through the door, 139 made it. All students enrolled grades nine through 12, they have us at 147. Our number, real number is 300, so these are kind of hard to work with. All I can tell you that even one dropout is too many, and we still have 20 to 30 per year that we'd like to find a way to keep. Advanced coursework, this is 45 of our students. That includes those who went to dual enrollment, which were in the high 20s numbers. Several of our students finished a half year or a full year of college while they were there. That also shows you, those 45 include dual enrollment students. They include things, something called open honors. An open honors is if a student at a very high, has a very high level, at a very high level enters our building and is something we can't accommodate, so they were previously in a higher class, but for whatever reason have landed with us and we're not offering that, that student approaches the teacher and asks for open honors, and they are given a different set of work with lots of, you know, the homework and the other responsibilities that go with having an honors class. So between those, 45 of our seniors, students engaged in that, and we're pretty happy about that. Our Ls, too, again, we only had 13. And students with disabilities, I, I'm not sure where that number comes from, because I only had two students with disabilities do dual enrollment, so I'll just be honest and tell you, that's a number I'm trying to figure out. I don't know where that comes from.
Probably was the FS, FSU students probably included in there possibly, yeah.
All right, so our school goals, this is, we'll talk about this later, but all of our goals. Number one, it was Goodrich Academy would provide all students access to rigorous standards, and that is important. And what's more important is what comes next, which is an academic experience in accordance with their unique individual abilities. So what you see on that picture in front of you are the 20-plus students that arrived last year to our doors about this time of year that had not passed the math MCAS. What that is, is Mr. Peter Perry coming down, volunteering to teach a class, that class is not taught when school is in order. All the people sitting in it are there voluntarily, the teachers are there to learn the magic and to share in it. We ran it for about 14 weeks, and as you may have learned, all 20 of the, 22, I think it was, students did pass the MCAS. We also introduced co-teaching in the math classes and biology classes for the first time. When we say we broke classes into smaller, more manageable chunks, what we mean is, we have some students that arrive at our door just unable to walk into geometry. They've been out of school for a while or various things, so we have now created a set of courses called Intro Two. And what that is, is considered an elective, it's not counted as their math credit, but an elective that will be a course they'll take that will ready them to walk into that, the course that's being offered in the mainstream. So that's what we mean by that. And last year, we were advised in our walkthroughs that people wanted word walls and other such things. Our teachers were not quite happy about that response, since they teach five courses, and we're not going to plaster that many words around their walls. So we went with student support binders, because we did want to respond to the need, and those were a great tool for us, and we're happy with the suggestion. Lots of- Lots of resource guides, a lot, a lot of reference sheets, and they're in every class for every student in every room, so that was a great break. This is our bell. We tell you this story because it sounds silly, but it really has taken on a life of its own, like some things do at Goodrich Academy. So each year, we have probably twenty students who arrive well deficit of credits, they're gonna have to be in the basement, literally, for hours on end after, at the end of the day, catching up credits. So for those students who have a special education teacher assigned to them, who some, for some reason volunteered for this, we help them, they do extra credit, they do online classes, they do ingenuity classes, they do Google classrooms, anything they can to get to that graduation line. And when they do, we've kind of made it a celebration, we have a lot of celebration around it, we have this bell, and when they complete their final credit, they ring the bell. Well, we thought it was nice, just a way to celebrate, and you'll see in further slides, it's taken on a life of its own. Students come, parents come, their brothers and sisters come to ring the bell, so that's a pretty big thing at Goodrich, and we have found a way to celebrate. Those who were in the basement, kind of in shame's, in shame's way, end up rising up, and you can hear it all over the school, so it's kind of a cool thing.
Where'd you get the bell?
I'm sorry?
Where'd you get the bell?
I bought it.
She bought it.
I'll buy you one if you talk to me.
It works, huh?
I bought it, yes, we bought it. All right, Goodrich, all, Goodrich Academy provides all students a safe and orderly environment in which to learn, zero calls to the police, except for Dr. Knight, if you're listening, you called the police one night while she was doing her internship by accident, we make a joke of that. That was the one they had to chase it down to find where the 911 call came from, and Dr. Knight accidentally hit that off. Zero reports of bullying, zero student complaints to Central that I'm aware of, zero complaints from parents that I'm aware of. And our graduation surveys, I'm not gonna get into them tonight, but they were extremely positive. I have copies for everyone here, and our students really are coming from everywhere and are pretty happy right now. Tomorrow could be a different picture. Goodrich continues to foster environment rooted in diversity and multiculturalism. I'm not into explaining all that, so I thought I'd just show you a picture. And we are missing one person on the right, Shante Colay, who is our clinical interventionist, who is out ill right now. So that is us when I took over in two thousand seventeen, and that is us in two thousand and twenty-three. I think it speaks for itself. All right, Goodrich will utilize resources to maximize student learning and achievement. We basically, through our ILT and Central Office, we completed the data increase cycles. It looks a little different at Goodrich. What we do is, what's the problem at hand, i.e. our science problem, break it all apart, figure it all out, and we did that for what our problems were, and what we came up with at the end of the day was, we needed another person in the hallways besides me to keep more careful eyes on more and more traffic as we grow. So we requested a dean of students and did get that, and we also found that communication was a major problem, I'm sorry, transportation was a major problem, so we requested use of the van. And I will tell you, as the van driver, it is awesome, take about twenty kids backward and forward every single day, and it is really, I think, going to make a great difference on our attendance. Summer school program, we worked with the Workforce Employment Board, we ran a summer school for those students lacking credits, and then we partnered with them to run fifteen additional students who are our assistants in that program, students that had graduated but might not yet be ready with the job skills necessary to go out to work. We had them work within the school, it was about a seventy-kid program, and it, I think it went well. And then our future teachers program, all right. This is just some things we did. We had an open house with eighty-four percent of students bringing someone. We have the senior concern meeting, so every single month, we run a senior concern meeting. We implemented home visits through our family home liaison. When we don't get the response from calls or visiting work or whatever, we now go to the homes. And we, this is just our escape room, and we had a great big celebration for pre-graduation. And staff will recognize the value contributions of students and family and continue with communication. I think you'll see in one of these screens, nightly call log, we literally call the home of every single absent student every single night. We log it, the teachers log, this is it. So this is what comes up every day. Teachers send up an absence list, the name goes up on the board, myself and the clinical interventionist call every home, and so people know we're calling and they know what's going on. We type this back in, and the teachers access this list, and there is one of these for every single night of the year. This is our day-to-day research, I'm not gonna go over this, it's too late, but basically, this tells you the, that tells you the results of our student survey, and again, I have them for you. And this is what we really do. This is Family Fun Night at Goodrich last year, these are just some of the events we had. Family Fun Night, this was, we'd never had ROTC. In fact, if you came on the wrong day, you could hear me screaming at the representatives from Gear Up, who wanted me to sign their contract but had not come to our school, and it made itself into a beautiful relationship where they are with us. We started our first-ever ROTC last year. They also tutor in our math classrooms now and assist us and help us with access testing. So it's wonderful. The holiday dinner, as you know, happens every year at Goodrich, and last year was no exception. We had two hundred people come to dinner and had a pretty good time. Our escape room, this is our field trip to the escape room where the kids were very engaged, was right on Main Street, Pittsburgh. We walked there, we walked to Espresso's, had some pizza, and had a great day, but we try to at least have one or two field trips. Prom speaks for itself. Bell ringing, we've spoken about. And graduation, which I think went really well, we had a wonderful day. And again, a hundred and thirty-nine young people crossed the stage, about which we are very proud. I think that's all we have, right?
Questions, questions for Alexis?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Take care.
Great job.
Thank you, Alexis.
You can use the van for the field trips now.
And last, but not least, this evening, we have Dr. John Braga from Pittsburgh High School with his admin team. Dr. Braga.
Good evening, everybody. I want to first start off that I've been the principal of Pittsburgh High School for a few months now, and it's been awesome, very exciting. I feel very welcomed by the staff, students, families, the community, so I'm very, very excited about that. Before I get started, I want to say a special thank you to all the staff of Pittsburgh High School, Central Office staff, school committee as well, too. The staff at Pittsburgh High School work extremely, extremely hard, and the improvement we've seen thus far would not take place if it wasn't for the staff members on the ground, and that's the teachers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, bus drivers. If I left somebody out, I apologize, but everybody's doing amazing work. And also, this team right here works day and night, rain or shine, they listen to my text messages on a Sunday where they could tell me, leave me alone and stay away from me, but they're always available, and they really are dedicated to the improvement of the school. So I just want to give them a second to introduce themselves, and we'll jump right into the presentation.
Brian Mazafaro, Assistant Principal.
Matt Lay, Matt Layme, Assistant Principal.
Doug Sichoka, Assistant Principal.
Jessica Rintul, Assistant Principal.
Tom Robbins, Director of Athletics.
Okay, ready to go. We can go to the next slide if that's okay. And then the one person we are missing today is Mark Manucci. He's our Special Education Administrator, couldn't make it here tonight, but he's with us in spirit. So this is our enrollment data, this is right from the DESI website. This is last year's data, but it's still very similar, except our enrollment is a bit under twelve-hundreds and a high eleven-hundreds. So did you want to jump in, Matt?
Sure. So, good evening, school committee, thank you for having us. Excuse me, my throat's a little scratchy, so I apologize. But, so a couple of highlights that we wanted to take a look at here. First and foremost, some exciting numbers, I think, that we wanted to share surrounding attendance the first couple of months at Pittsburgh High School. Going back to the summer, Dr. Braga put together kind of a culture and climate team to really do a deep dive into, you know, conduct data, attendance data, some instructional things that we really took stock of. And a lot of the result of that work, we kind of cleaned up a lot of our systems and routines and how we can best utilize staff to address attendance issues. And really, what this has been is just a tremendous team effort from really every department in the school, teachers, support staff, clinicians, guidance, you know, secretaries, everyone's really had a hand in this, and we've all made a strong commitment to, not only just decrease our chronic absentee rates, but to just make sure that we're doing everything we can to reach out to families and the students and to get everybody into, into the classroom on a daily basis. So we're really excited about these numbers. Of course, we're gonna continue to track them throughout the year, but that's really been, I think, one of our top highlights thus far. Conduct referrals, if, we, we've done some work surrounding kind of a comparison, you know, throughout the last several years. We've also, again, I think from some of the work that we did this summer, too, just cleaning up some of our communication systems and routines has allowed for a big drop in conduct, not just refer, but just overall incidents that we've had this year, too. And I know the district has really helped us out a lot, too, in, in how we manage our information system, and some of the input that we put in for, for conduct as well. And of course, a lot of our, you know, the approaches that we've, we've made to it are aligned with, you know, some of the new discipline guidelines laid, laid out by the state. So, so far, we've seen a, you know, pretty significant drop in, in some of those rates, so we're excited about that as well. Also, just the feedback from all the stakeholders that we've had so far this year has been really, really positive, students, staff, families, you know, really, the whole community has been strong. You know, I, I think, you know, just because we're opening up our lines of communication throughout the whole school, we're able to get and solicit a lot of feedback, so that's been great. And then just back to kind of the team aspect at our school, you know, addressing, you know, some of the things that we, we really wanted to hone in on this year has been just a tremendous team effort, our set team. You know, that involves all departments at Pittsburgh High School. You know, we have a, a system in place, it's a multi-tiered system of support, where anyone can really, if a student, you know, is viewed as potentially struggling with something, anyone can really make a referral, and we follow up on, on so many different levels. That, that's been a big success so far in addressing just some of those climate issues and everything like that. So, a lot of positive, positive news coming out of Pittsburgh High School, it's been great so far. You know, again, with like attendance and things like that, it's just, it's been, we're looking at it a daily basis, we're talking about it. There's some really, really positive signs so far.
Thank you, Matt. Just a couple of events we had, so we had the Director of Earth Science, who was a Pittsburgh High graduate from NASA, come and speak to our students. We had National Gear Up Week Kickoff Assembly, focused on investing in the future generation. If you ever want to stay up to date with Pittsburgh High School, just go to our website, click Daily Announcements, the weekly message is there, videos, pictures. If you have a question about Pittsburgh High, my answer usually is check the website. So it should be there, school council information, et cetera. So we can dive into the data, and before we dive into the data, like, we own our data, we understand that, you know, we need to improve, and there's room to improve, and we're confident that the plan we're putting in place is gonna help us improve that data. So I'll review the data with you, and then I'll go into our plan for, for this year. So as you can see, our accountability percentile is thirteen, fifteen percent limited or no progress toward targets. So there's about a three percent decrease from last school year in terms of accountability So if you're looking at our overall progress towards targets, I forgot my glasses, so I'm gonna look at the paper and not the slide. You can see that we, we did not get any points in achievement. For growth, we did, we did receive a point in English Language Arts and mathematics growth. High school completion, from there, our four-year cohort graduation rate, we did receive two points. High school completion total, two points. English language proficiency, unfortunately, we did not receive any points, but both with our chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework completion, we did receive some points in there. So the percentage of the possible total points is that fifteen percent. Okay, so English Language Arts achievement, as I was talking about in the previous slide, we, we didn't receive any points there, and we, we had a bit of a decline except for our, except for our special education students, that there was no change, but there was also no decline. And we're confident with the work we're doing around effective lessons and learning targets and success criteria are gonna help to support our overall achievement. And going into math, same kind of situation, we've seen a decline from twenty-two to twenty-three in terms of achievement. And then with science, you know, reviewing the data, we also see a decline in our twenty-two to twenty-three overall achievement. So looking at our ELA growth, we saw low growth in ELA in math, and when we look at our goals for this school year, again, you know, it, we're confident that the work that we're doing out the gate now, having an ELA coach, having a math coach, having a science coach, having a social studies coach, consistent ILT, consistent meetings with coaches, we're starting our data inquiry cycle tomorrow, which is gonna focus specifically on learning targets and success criteria through observation data and establishing trends in MCAS-related courses. We think we're gonna get a lot of feedback and information around how we can move our professional learning than to move our academic gains with that, with that data. And again, our key focus standard for the year is effective lessons, which is 1A3 in the teacher rubric, and that fits in perfectly with learning targets and success criteria, which is kind of like the beginning of, and the overall kind of compass of effective lessons. We can, we can go by the math one. So four-year cohort graduation rate, we did see some improvement here, and in one case, our EL students, we exceeded the target, so that is, you know, that's a positive. It's good to point out the positive as well. So we see in some of these cases, we improved, we exceeded, and we also met the target. And extended engagement rate, essentially, that's the five-year cohort graduation rate plus the percentage of students from the cohort who are still enrolled. We did see a decline. In one subgroup, we did exceed the target. Annual dropout rate, we did see some decline in that as well. We are doing a lot of work on the ground in terms to, in terms of dropout rate and graduation. We're meeting with students now out the gate. We are setting up a biology supports, support program. Thank you, Jeremy, for giving us a budget line for that, that's gonna be very helpful. And then we're gonna get as many students as we can in phone calls, home visits, to get students in to pass that science MCAS, especially if they're in the twelfth grade and needed to graduate. Access, we, we did see a decline there as well. And again, our work with learning targets and success criteria, really digging in and focusing on our EL students, we think is gonna raise access, our overall gains in access. Specifically, one of my focuses is our EL students in our EL classrooms, I visit those classrooms on a regular basis to, to provide that support, and kind of looking at how that curriculum's being implemented and the supports that we need to support our students, we believe is gonna help to, to make those gains. And some positive news coming out of this school year in terms of, I'm sorry, last school year, in terms of data, in terms of chronic absenteeism, we see we've exceeded targets, met targets, improved. So this is some positives in terms of the overall data from twenty-two to twenty-three. We saw our chronic absenteeism drop, and we, we know that it's, it's not enough, we need to drop it more, and that's the work we're doing now with our consistent phone calls, with our home visits as well, to get students to come in and figure out why students aren't coming to school. Our advanced coursework completion, again, you know, there is an area where we did decline our EL and former EL students, and that's something for us to keep in mind as we do our work, is keeping our EL students and our special education students in mind with all of our planning. In terms of all of our planning. In terms of other subgroups, we did meet our target in advanced coursework And so, these are our six goals really wrapped into one. So, what we did, if you look at our full SIP, and I think you may have the document, if you don't, if you have this presentation, you do, it links right to it. So, essentially, what we wanted to do is make a specific snapshot of the school improvement plan, because the whole school improvement plan for a teacher or one person is very encompassing. It's very large. But having a specific snapshot, like, these are our goals, this is our work for this year, we really think is gonna help us with our overall growth. So, our school improvement achievement goals, our instructional goal, Fitchburg High School will practice school-wide Tier One foundational supports, engage in critical thinking, and utilize multiple methods of communication throughout the learning process. Two of the big components of last school year, effective communication and critical thinking, we wanted to encompass that in our goal this year, but really focus on that lesson planning, which is the beginning of any piece of instruction. If you have an effective lesson, you deliver the effective lesson, the students then can learn. They're learning, then we can see the performance in the classroom, in the tests, in the graduation rates overall and improve. Culture goal, this was a big piece coming into the high school that I heard with my one...
(coughs)
Sorry. You okay, John?
Excuse me, yes.
No, no, you're good. You're good. With my one-to-one meetings with staff, with the community, was around culture. So, Fitchburg High School will build systems to engage students, families, and staff to ensure a sense of welcoming and belonging. We're doing this on the ground every day, being in the hallways, at transitions, being at breakfast, being at lunch. Hi, how are you? How's everything doing? Not everything necessarily needs a metric, but the fact that we're there and we're building that culture is what makes the difference. Priorities, which come right from our goals. Number one, to support critical thinking and effective communication. Professional learning will focus on lesson formation implementation. Two, implement tiered interventions. Matt talked a little bit about this with our SET team. And I think that was something you created, Jeremy, so we're keeping it going. We thank you for that. We're bringing in the MTSS lens as well, too. Those documents are available right on our Aspen page for our teachers. There's one that's initial form. If a teacher's concerned about a student's academic or behavioral progress, there's a meeting that takes place and a Tier Two plan is created. So, let me just read that again. So, implement tiered interventions that provide all students with access to the school's educational program. And then, the third one, create a sense of belonging amongst all stakeholders by establishing a welcoming school environment. We know as a team that there's a lot of work ahead of us, and we're excited about the work. I'm excited about the work. And we're making gains every day. So, you know, we're confident that when we come and meet with you as a team next year, we're looking at data that we can really show some great improvements.
Term that I've heard over and over this evening is critical thinking. Can you give me an example of what that looks like?
Sure. So, critical thinking...
Basically?
Yeah. So, critical thinking in the classroom, for example, I observed a classroom today and students read a specific paragraph. From that paragraph, they created a summary. And then, from that summary, they created different conflicts that were within that summary. So, they're reading The Great Gatsby, and they identified that there was a conflict between consumerism and advertisement. So, it's not like a right there situation where it's like, okay, for example, tell me the first three words in the instructional goal. Fitchburg High School. Okay, boom, it's right there. But I said, if I said, okay, let's think about this and provide me some examples of what an instructional goal would look like at Fitchburg High School, then what it would look like at Lawrence High School, and then how would you take that information to create a plan that could be implemented in any urban high school around the country? That's probably way too much information. Sorry, Mayor.
No, it's great.
So, if you had to sum up what your challenges are, what's the biggest challenge?
We have...
It's more than one.
Well...
What are you faced with, with the student population, that provides some of the challenges that these numbers show?
Sure. Our student population is our best asset, is our best resource. Our families are our best resource. The challenge that we face, and we're starting to bridge already, is coming together as a team to do this work. The work isn't easy, but as we come together as a team and continue to identify different things we need to do, the outcomes will be better and better. They'll naturally become better. In year one, you'll make some gains. In year two, you'll make some more. And as you're going along, you're gonna identify there's other things you need to do that weren't right there on your docket to get done. So, I personally believe, just from my experience, I used to be the young twenty-one-year-old teacher, not anymore, but from my experience, it's bringing the team together that really, really matters, you know?
The only guy I know is Lamy.
He's a good guy to know.
The rest of them are all brand new.
That's great.
So, you're trying to gel, if you will?
And I think we've achieved that before. And, you know, hopefully, they're not just nodding, 'cause I'm up here. But we work, you know, we work extremely well together. We work hard together. We work off each other. We all have our strengths. We all have a specific area that we focus on, specific backgrounds. But I can't say enough about our teachers, our students, and our families. Those are our true assets. Our teachers go in there and they work hard every day. They take the information that we provide around learning targets, around success criteria, effective lessons. They're on board, which is amazing. And the feedback that we provide to improve instruction, it's taken in. And we see the changes in the classroom as well. Now, we've only been an administrative team for about two months. And we've seen so many great things in two months. We had a really nice conversation when you came by.
We did.
Yeah. And I appreciate you coming by as well. So, we're confident, and when we hit conflict, we're confident that we can go over it, you know, 'cause essentially, what is success, if you think about it? Success is hitting a roadblock and being able to get over that roadblock, to learn what you need to do to get over the next roadblock.
Been a lot of challenges.
Yeah.
Do we have a dress code, the high school?
We do. It's in the, it's in our student handbook.
Do we...
Enforce it?
What's that?
We do. We enforce it to the best of our ability, for sure. Right now, we're working really hard on our cell phone policy. So, we're in the classrooms every day to enforce the cell phone policy. Definitely more work to do. And there's parts of the student handbook we definitely wanna revise and bring up.
Speaking of cell phones, is there, there are some schools where you turn, the phone stays outside, outside the classroom. Is that...
No.
Is that, no?
That's not our, our system is the phone goes in the backpack. So, if you wanted to do a...
Okay. But I mean, they don't have it with them in their hand.
So...
Some schools do have that.
Right.
There's like these bags. I mean, it would have to be kind of like a district-wide thing, but essentially, there's these bags, and the name's escaping me now, but the phone would, yonder, thank you, the phone would go in the bag, it's closed, and then it goes in the backpack. So, I met with someone from yonder at the beginning of this school year. And again, that's just, this is just informational, not saying that this is the way we're gonna go, 'cause we're seeing good success in the policy we're putting in place. But what yonder is, for informational purposes only, is a bag that locks the phone. And there's like a table when you walk through the building. And then, the students put the bag in their backpack. And then, at the end of the day, they like put this thing on the wall, and they click it, and then it's open. But the kids keep the bag. But that would have to be something that...
Does that make sense? That you shouldn't have access to a cell phone? Uh-oh.
There's positives and minuses, I think. There's positives and negatives to it.
Well, it would be, it would, sorry.
When students get out into the workforce, go to college, later on in life, they're gonna have to be able to control their impulses to grab the phone.
Okay.
We're teaching them to be young adults, do different skills. That's one of the things that we're implementing now. And I think our system is working because it's, keep it away. Put it in, you know, put it in your backpack. Don't take it with you to the bathroom. Like, we're seeing less and less write-ups about the phones. Some kids are having a harder time than others, but they're learning that skill to stay off of the phone and not have that impulse control that, anytime they hear something vibrate or see a flash, they're not reaching for it in their pocket, in their, on their purse.
And we're in classrooms every day, you know, assistant principals, monitors, we're checking in the classrooms every day. And again, Mayor, I come from a school with twenty-three-hundred students, with less staff. So, you know, those skills that I learned there, we're doing here at Fitchburg High School. And again, if the school district, school committee wanted to have something like yonder bags, my suggestion as a principal is that we would all be on board with something like that. And it's, you'd wanna discuss that with the community.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Could I add something to that?
Yeah, sure.
Today, when I was subbing, I saw the best phone policy that I, it just floored me. It was so beautiful. And I didn't take time to memorize it, but it was, it was a smaller-than-this package. And it laminated instructions on the front, the front about phone, what would happen with the phone. And it was so well thought out. I'd probably bring it and share it with you.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. And, but we're all addicted to the phones.
Yeah.
It's absolutely incredible.
And that's why one of our focuses, especially when it comes to the social, emotional aspect, was having a clear cell phone policy that we enforce, teachers enforce, but we also support the teachers to enforce.
Yeah. So, again, just my experience, which many of you share, is many of the assignments are, all of the assignments are posted on Google. And so, they either use their book or their phones. Up till now, they've had the...
Well, there's one-to-one Chromebooks, so we, students have the Chromebooks. They can access the...
Yeah, but the Chromebooks sometimes don't work, and so they use it. You know, there's all sorts of things. It's not, it's not really easy right now, but I think we see it as a problem, right?
Yeah. And we, like I said before, you know, come take a walk through the school. We're really working hard to make sure that's not taking place. And it's consistent hard work, but, you know, we're seeing some great improvements from it.
John, we've got many wonderful students in our middle schools. And I'm always concerned about our eighth graders and where they go.
Yeah.
Are you starting to plan yet about reaching down into the middle schools like we did a few years ago with the VIP Music Program, which was very successful, which...
So, I think we just had a presentation.
I can speak to that a little bit. So, we had eighth graders from Longchamp and Memorial at the school on Thursday of last week and took the opportunity to share a little bit about Fitchburg High School then. We're also planning on visiting the Longchamp and Memorial in the next couple of months to do presentations and bring along some of our students, that our students can share their experiences at the high school. And so that, it makes it a little bit easier for our eighth grade students to visualize themselves there.
Yeah. Very important that, going back a few years before Mr. Roach put in the Honest Program, we were losing eighteen of our top twenty kids. And then, since he put that program in, we were getting eighteen of our top twenty kids. I just wanna make sure we continue to...
Another big thing we're doing, we really wanna utilize our website. So, as much as you can get it out there to the community, go on our website, go on our website, like, please push that out there. Our daily announcements have all of our information from our, send out a weekly email, but also like all just our updates and like fun pictures for events we do are there. Our pathways, we have a lot of great pathways at Fitchburg High School. Business pathway, we have an education pathway. We're looking to create a side tab on our website that shows those pathways, 'cause we think when the community sees like some of the great pathways we have at the high school, they're gonna wanna come to Fitchburg High School. And we've felt as a team, really focusing on the logistics out the gate, instructuring the logistics, will make the environment more comfortable, students become more successful, and then really promoting and pushing out the great things at the high school, 'cause there's, there's so much. Like, from an outside perspective, coming from, you know, different inner-city high schools, I can tell you the resources are vast at Fitchburg High School. I know we had a nice conversation about that.
Yeah.
You know, talking about class sizes that I've experienced.
That was very revealing, by the way. I never realized.
That's okay. And I won't say specifically, you know, 'cause that's inappropriate. But we really have a great thing at Fitchburg High School. Really have a great thing. And we're...
We take it for granted, John. We, sometimes we do. Some of us do. Maybe not, maybe not folks up here, but that it exists everywhere.
Yeah, for sure.
But it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, I really didn't get to learn, not just about the high school, but all the schools in Fitchburg until my wife first served on the school committee. And I would watch school committee on Monday nights. And what I learned was that there are so many good things going on in all of our schools. There are so many wonderful students, so many great teachers, and that what a lot of people only hear about are the situations that are negative. And I think that really is the wrong picture for what is happening in our schools and what administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, what everybody does to make the learning experience when they're in that school a successful one. And then, when my wife got elected to the city council, I was appointed to serve on the school committee, so I'm here now. But I'm really proud of what happens in our schools, and I'm quick to let people know what is going on and what is happening and what is positive. And I appreciate this night when you come and present everything to see what is happening. And also, the honesty from all the principals in terms of identifying the areas that they know that needs to improve and what we're doing to make that improve. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
You're great, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll set Dr. Knight.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, last stretch. Tonight, we have some donations and grants. Mr. Roach, can you go through those for us, please?
Sure can. Yeah. So, we have three donations and several grants to review. Donations, we had talked about this at the resource subcommittee meeting last week, or two weeks ago, a thousand dollars from Colonial West Chevrolet to the athletic department. This will be helpful to various activities. And we heard about some of those tonight that the athletic department is seeking to do. We have five thousand pairs of Bombas socks donated at an estimated value of five thousand dollars. And these will be distributed to all schools for children in need, and they will be distributed through the nurses' offices as well as through the home liaisons. And that was donated by a particular foundation that is not identified, so...
Bombas Foundation.
Which one was it?
No, that's Bombas Socks.
Yeah, just Bombas Socks, I think, is what it was.
It's Bombas Foundation.
Yep. And then, the, there'll be two hundred hygiene kits donated by the recreation department, and that would be one hundred for males, boys, hundred for females, girls, estimated value of six hundred dollars, again, to distribute to children in need in all the schools in a similar way through the nurse's office. And then, in terms of grants, we are looking to accept the following grants. It'd be three thousand dollars from the district attorney, Joseph DiEroli's office. That would be used to support and supplement the FHS Athletics Crocker Field Weight Room. And that's a grant that has been generously provided by the district attorney's office for many years. And then, the Masgrad Promising Practices is a Department of Ed grant in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. And this provides academic clinical and career services provided to individual students and families of Goodrich Academy. And I think we heard a lot about the great things that go on there. And we do know that many of the students at Goodrich Academy do enter into the workforce directly. So, that'll be put to really good use there.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. And then, the last two items are the policy items that we did the first reading for at last meeting. The first one is the school entrance age policy. We revised that to reflect the September first age five. For this school year, we'll go back, if it's approved tonight, and allow any student who was five years old on or before September first to enroll in Fitchburg Public Schools. Going back, remember, the policy had switched to August first, and we were not in line to any school district around us in the area. So, I recommend to return that to the September first date.
The Thompson...
Yes.
And that's gonna be retroactive this year.
Yes. If we can, if we... Can we do that? I would like to do that. So, I have several parents that have been calling.
Should that be reflected?
I don't think so. We have a list of the parents that I'm gonna call and make phone calls to. I'll have my enrollment director start doing that tomorrow and reaching out to those families. We have that list. Okay?
I have a couple of questions, whenever you may.
Yep.
Yep. Regarding, let me go over the last policy.
Yes, you do your thing, and then I'll...
And then the second reading for the school door security policy, there was a few grammatical areas, areas that we had to go back and fix, and those have been fixed at this time.
Okay.
So, questions?
Question, can you, you don't happen to have a pair of Bombas socks here, do you? I think the answer's gonna be no.
I do not, no.
Did you see the Bombas socks? I think that they're like fabulous, like the best socks, if it's the kind of socks...
I have a pair, yes. And they've lasted forever.
Aren't they wonderful?
I have one pair.
I mean, they're not just socks, like we could go out to any store and get...
They're high quality.
Yeah, high quality.
Will you get me a size fourteen?
I see what I can find for you. Samples for next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, fourteen. You're fourteen?
Yeah.
In no way is this an endorsement by the school committee for Bombas socks.
We're not endorsing that sock brand.
Just grateful for the Bombas.
I gotta put, I'll say.
And then the other, I just wanted to comment on that, 'cause when I discovered them, I said, oh, my goodness, this is great, that socks could be so good. I think they have no sewing together that would cause any kind of a ridge in all of this. Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to say, do you know what's in the, these two hundred hygiene kits?
I know, but I can find out and report back. I believe it's soap, toothpaste, toothbrushes...
Deodorant.
Deodorant and those types of things.
That's what it was.
I'm almost certain, but we can get an itinerary.
I looked at the kits myself.
They did?
They are actually downstairs in enrollment office, but they're basic hygiene kits.
Yeah, it'd be good to know, but when we present these things, like something like that, it'd help us if we had an example and a sample, and then we'd actually know.
Hope that's a good one.
Wouldn't be blind. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Action items. Does the committee have the appetite to bundle these?
Yeah.
Well, with the first one, we voted on already, right?
Yes. Make a motion to bundle action item twenty-three dash three oh six through action item twenty-three dash three one two.
Excellent. Second the motion. Motion made and seconded to bundle twenty-three dash three oh six up through and including twenty-three dash three twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous.
Make a motion to approve the bundle.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to approve the bundle. All in favor?[1779.62]